All right, we are on air. Welcome, everyone, to the Xenia City Council Regular Meeting here on January 9th, 2025. And as our tradition is, we're going to have a time of prayer. If you please stand with me. Pastor Albert Repit from Victory Life Church will lead us in prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Lord, once again, we find ourselves at the close of another day, knowing that you've been good to us, knowing that your faithfulness runs after us. And Father, we're mindful today that we also laid to rest one of our great Presidents, Mr. Carter. And Father, we're just thankful for what his life speaks of. And Father, tonight, as we come into this meeting, for all that will be discussed and decisions made, Lord, we thank you for our council and the other members of this management team and what they bring to the table. Father, we continue to ask that your blessing be upon each and every one. May they have wisdom and guidance, Lord, as decisions are made. We thank you, Father, that we live in a blessed community. And we ask now that your presence be present tonight, God, that a spirit of unity remains as we go forward, in Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen. If you'd please face the American flag, and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, baby. Seated. All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order at this time, and we'll start with roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Crawford.
Here.
Councilman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Here.
President Urschel.
Here. All right, the next item on our agenda is I'm going to be sworn in as mayor. Come on down.
Did we all come down?
No.
What do we know you, right, James? How's it going now?
Just sit in the box.
That's an awfully big Bible there.
Yes, this is, I don't know if you guys have seen this, this is my family Bible, and it dates back about 150 years. And it was my great-great-aunt gave this Bible to my great-great-grandmother on her wedding. And they were all taking my, I said, take deep breath, that's right, they're all farmers, and we had a very tight farming community. And to afford a Bible like this, that has a concordance and two versions and is leather-bound, was a big expense at that time. But my story came down that my great-great-aunt saved up all her...
Egg money.
Egg money, yeah, from across the year, so she could purchase this Bible for them and stuff. And so, my great-great-aunt's son then went on to Harvard Law School and was the Attorney General of the State of Indiana. And there is some part of the story that says that this was the Bible that he used when he sworn in there as well, too. So, a couple of generations later, I went to the little trade school down the river from Harvard, and now I'm here to be able to swear in as well, too. So, a part of the reason I brought this is you need to have some sort of foundation as you are taking a lead role for the city and the community and in your own life as well, too. And so, Scripture has always been that for me, and so, I just wanted to bring this tonight and be able to put my hand on this while I swear, so.
But we thank you for the opportunity to swear you in here today.
Yes, and this is, folks, this is Judge McMe from the Xenia Municipal Court, and thank you, sir, for coming in and being willing to do this tonight.
Absolutely. We have found how to fill council, the council room, and that's to have you sworn in.
The rest of the council said, "Well, is there an issue tonight, and why are all these people here?"
But it is a testament to the service that you've dedicated to the community and to the city, and I want to express my gratitude, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the last several years, and I look forward to continuing in that relationship.
Great, thanks, Judge.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. I, William Urschel.
I, William Urschel.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear.
that as mayor of the City of Xenia, Ohio.
that as mayor of the City of Xenia, Ohio.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Xenia.
and the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Xenia.
that I will not be influenced by any consideration.
that I will not be influenced by any consideration.
except that of merit and fitness.
except that of merit and fitness.
in the appointment or discharge of employees.
and the appointment or discharge of employees.
and I will not make or authorize the expenditure.
and I will not make or authorize the expenditure.
of public money otherwise.
of public money otherwise.
than for adequate consideration and efficient service.
than for adequate consideration and efficient service.
to the City of Xenia.
to the City of Xenia.
furthermore.
furthermore.
as mayor.
as mayor.
I will dutifully and respectfully respect the City of Xenia at all times.
I will dutifully.
and respectfully.
and respectfully, respect the City of Xenia at all times.
I promise to discharge, to the best of my abilities.
I promise to discharge, to the best of my abilities.
the duties of mayor of the City of Xenia.
the duties of mayor of the City of Xenia.
representing equally.
representing equally.
honestly.
honestly.
and faithfully.
and faithfully.
all citizens who call Xenia home.
all citizens who call Xenia home.
and I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
honestly.
honestly.
and impartially.
and impartially.
discharge the duties of my office.
discharge the duties of my office.
Congratulations, man.
I'd like, Albert, you want to come up?
Sure.
And I'm going to have my family come on up here. Will you pray for us?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
It's a pleasure.
Come on up here. I have my wife and my son and their kids here with us tonight, too.
Yeah. Well, in honor, I appreciate you allowing me to do this. It certainly wasn't planned or anything, but, you know, in the last year that I've gotten to know you, you know, by coming to some of these meetings and just other things that we do together, it's been a real pleasure, you know, I appreciate your spirit, and I'm grateful to your family, you and his kin and the kids, because being a public servant, and just as all of us really in here, we live in a glass house, you know? And so, it's not always an easy task sharing your father, you know, granddad, you know, things of this nature, but we're very, for husband, you know? I know myself, I reserve one day a week just for my wife. Mondays, I mean, if I'm coming to see you, you're probably dead. We love you and appreciate you. Heavenly Father, I thank you tonight, in Jesus' name, for this Urschel family, each and every one of them. Father, we just thank you for their commitment, for Will's commitment, God, all these years, Lord, from pastoring as a youth pastor, coming up through the ranks, pastoring in his role there at Emmanuel Baptist, serving this great community as president of our council, and other things, and all the years he served in the Air Force. Father, you wired Will to do what he's doing today and to be the leader. And Father, even as I alluded to Mr. Carter a moment ago, Father, I even think that Will has a lot of those same characteristics. He knows how to do his Christian faith and to mix it with his politics, his policies and ideologies and things of that nature. But Father, I thank you, it's the Holy Spirit that leads him and guides him and that strengthens him to do what he does so well. But Father, as he steps into this new role, tonight will be different than last year on January the 9th, when he went to bed as president of the council, and the next day woke up still president, but tonight, God, he goes to bed as our mayor. He steps into a new role. So, I thank you that there is a new spirit of council, a new spirit of wisdom that will rest upon him from this day forward, that God, when his eyes awaken tomorrow, he'll have new eyes, he'll see with new vision, he'll have a new heart. His heart will change and move into a vision greater for our city and our community and all that he works with. So, Father, we bless him tonight, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and amen.
Amen. Thanks, Albert.
Congratulations.
Thanks, you guys. These are my two boys and their kids. They're actually, these are my grandkids, they're my real job during the... Right? Right? I just want to tell everybody, thank you for coming tonight. I kind of picked some folks that have different parts of my time. Mrs. Pollak, who's with Five Riddler Healthcare, suffered with me in the youth ministry about, what, 20, 25 years ago, when she was at Cedarville University, and helped out with all that stuff. I got Stephen from Bridges of Hope, our director from Bridges of Hope, and Tracy and Melissa and Amber from our church there, and some of the folks that have known me for some other time as well, too. I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight for this. And Tommy in the back, who keeps me in line all the time, and as I got going with this thing, he would always give me a hint, say, "Hey, hey, next time, you did okay, but this one's really hard to do." Which is always encouraging, so. Looking forward to being the mayor this year. Mayor is just 107 on council, so no executive role, but an opportunity to be the representative of our city in a lot of ways, too. So, just need help from everybody on that. So, like Tommy does, if I get out of line, just pull me off and say, "Hey, you're doing okay, but let me tell you..." Because I can use that as well, too. So, anyways, I want to say thanks to my family, my wife, who's put up for 33 years of me being in the Air Force, and she's put up with me longer than 33 years, but a lot of time away from home. I think I figured out all those 33 years, I was away from home about three years total during that time, when she had all the kids and took care of the rest of them, and my two sons, my daughter's out on the West Coast, so she's watching LA burn, so it's much more entertaining being here tonight, so. So, thanks, guys, for coming here, my grandkids, who we love, and that's part of the reason we do all this, is because we have, we got our grandkids and our great-grandkids, and we want to leave this place a good, safe environment for them to grow and to thrive, and that's really the main reason we do all this stuff at this point. So, they're a good visual reminder to us of all the important things with that as well, too. So, yeah. So, we're going to just take a five-minute, just a short break here, the part of the coming in and getting sworn in to mayors over, and now we're going to get down to the dirty business of just doing business in the city. So, I'm not expecting everybody to stay for that, because that's, we don't have enough snacks for everybody to be here.
May I interject one thing?
Sure, yes.
We just wanted to address the snow emergency that happened earlier this week. Mr. Merriman is the person who we, as the court, interfaced with and just did an outstanding, excellent job in keeping us advised, keeping us posted. We knew what was going to happen before it happened because of his guidance. I know that that also comes from everybody, so I just wanted to thank you for that outstanding job.
And I just, so, yeah, we'll talk about this a little bit more, but man, the streets got cleaned quickly. The guys were out 24/7 doing all that stuff. I know they plowed our street at 2:00 AM and did a great job with all that. And I just want to say kudos to the judge, just so you know, the judge has responsibility of overseeing the municipal court, so for half the county, so it isn't just Xenia, it's basically Xenia and everything to the east is under his responsibility and has the probation department with him as well, too, and the bailiffs, and so he gets to hear a lot of stuff.
I do.
about people's lives, and people are kind of looking for him for wisdom and judgment in terms of what's going on, the next step of their lives and stuff, too. So, anyways, Judge, thanks for coming over tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Sure. All right, so let's go ahead and thank you. We'll take a short break, and I want to say thank you to a couple of your folks, and we'll get going with our meeting in a few minutes. All right, at this point, let's switch things. Actually, you got it, you got the gavel. And then we'll switch.
So, I just handled the gavel over to the vice president, because I'm not president anymore, so.
All right, very good. So, next on our agenda is our annual reorganization of city council. At this time, this is when the council elects its president and vice president for the one-year term of 2025. The requirement to be president or vice president is you have to serve at least two years on council to serve as one of those officers. So, it's kind of by default here how it happens tonight, so.
How many of us have served two years?
Just councilman, president, or actually, Mayor Urschel and myself. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to open the floor up for a nomination for council president for 2025. Do we have any nominations for that?
I nominate Wesley Smith to be council president.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that nomination.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Before we close that, is there any other nominations? Okay? No? All right. So, at this time, we'll vote for the office of president. Can I get a roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Yes.
Councilman Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Yes.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. And at this time, we'll also accept a nomination for vice president, and due to our charter changes, that was in 2021, is that correct?
It was 2020, but that is correct. There was a, I did note there was a misprint in the Xenia Gazette in the last article saying that the positions, you could not be president and vice and mayor at the same time, that is incorrect. When the voters did vote to change the charter, the mayor is eligible to hold either president or the vice president position.
Very good. All right, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for a nomination for vice president for 2025.
Well, I'll nominate Will as vice president.
All right, we have a second motion, and by Councilman Crawford, seconded by Councilman Reynolds to nominate Mayor Urschel as our vice president. Are there any other nominations? By default, there could be none, so we'll go ahead and close the nominations and ask for a roll call, please.
President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Aye.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're going to take just one minute, we're going to switch chairs here.
Next year, Councilman Reynolds, Councilwoman Surrice, and Councilman Crawford, you will all be eligible. You've got one more year to be eligible for president.
I'll find that job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And while our clerk makes the changes there, just a couple of things, this is actually unprecedented for us as council to have two openings on the council this year, so that will be something that we'll be discussing here in a little bit. And also, new that we've had someone actually carry two titles, which is mayor and vice president. So, I'd like to applaud and thank Mayor Urschel for stepping up to the plate to fulfill both duties, so thank you very much.
I'm just a heartbeat away from the president.
That's right. I feel as old as Biden, so, okay, anyway, that's a joke. So, anyway, we are going on to approval amendments. Our first item for approval amendments is our December 23 regular meeting. At this time, we will accept a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Surrice. Any additions or corrections to the minutes at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll get a roll call to accept, please.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next is our January 3, 2025. That was a special meeting. I'll take a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll move.
All right, moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Surrice. Any questions or comments on that? Get a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, there's no scheduled special presentation for tonight, so we'll move right into audience comments. This is the opportunity that we delight in. Anyone that would care to come to the podium, this is your opportunity to address city council. We ask for you to give us your name, address for the record, limit your comments three to four minutes. All right, we'll close that section of the meeting, and we'll move on to old business. There's none scheduled for tonight, so that moves right into new business, First Items Resolution 2025-01, that is a request for the advance payment of 2024 tax settlements. This is from our Green County Auditor, and at this time, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Duke for some enlightenment on that.
Thank you, council president. Yeah, each year, staff brings to council a resolution requesting authorization to receive advanced payments, property taxes. Essentially, what this allows us to do is to receive any dollars that the county auditor might have collected in advance of the settlements that typically happen in February and August, so it primarily benefits us in relation to the August settlement, but it does allow us to improve our cash flow a little bit, to have those dollars in the city accounts accruing cement risk rather than sitting over at the county, so I think it's an advantageous step for us to take to ensure that we receive those dollars as quickly as they're available. So, we're requesting tonight that the resolution be passed so that we can file it with the county auditor and receive those advances as they're available.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duke. Any questions from the floor for Mr. Duke regarding the tax settlements? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to pass this.
So moved.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
No second.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next item, Resolution 2025-002, this is to approve, you're fine, a final plat and authorize the city manager to enter into subdividers agreement with Robinwood Development LLC and the Wright Cycle Estates, Section 15. At this time, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mr. President, another sign of growth, and as council is aware, additions to the Wright Cycle Estates have been in the planning stages, and steps are now being pursued to authorize this next phase. Resolution 2025-002, if approved, would authorize execution of a subdividers agreement with the developer, Robinwood Development LLC, for this Section 15. This addition would include the following components, extension of the currently stubbed tandem drive to a stub ending west of a proposed intersection with Ryder Way, and creation of a beneficial second access point for Lakeview Drive via tandem drive and Lakeview's extension to Ryder Way. Stubbing of Ryder Way with north, excuse me, stubbing of Ryder Way north of Lakeview Drive and south of tandem drive, this would eventually connect to the existing Ryder Way in a future phase that runs parallel to the southeast of tandem. Extension of sanitary sewer water and storm water mains from Section 14 along tandem drive, addition of a new storm water main along Ryder Way and to Wright Cycle Park, which would empty into that existing pond. And this would facilitate 24 lots fronting on tandem drive, seven lots fronting on Ryder Way, and one lot fronting on Lakeview Drive. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission found that the final plan is consistent with the most recently adopted PUD concept plan for Wright Cycle Estates, and further that the applicable land development code review criteria for PUDs and subdivisions have been met. Planning and Zoning Commission voted on September 11, 2024, at its meeting to recommend the approval of the plat. Staff is therefore recommending city council approve the resolution to allow for this final plat and authorize the subdividers agreement, again, with Robinwood Development LLC for Wright Cycle Estates, Section 15.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Merriman? All right, thank you, and thank you for our city planner, Mr. Forshner, for all the work that you do. This time, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve Resolution 2025.
All right, move to approve the, unauthorized to enter the agreement by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Surrice. If there's no other questions or concerns, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilwoman Surrice.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2025-03, this is supporting the Ohio Municipalities League challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. So, we'll ask the law director to give us an update on that.
Thank you, sir. First of all, my apologies for the late addition of this to the agenda. This was something that kind of cropped up for all municipalities, it cropped Ohio at the last minute. On December 18, AT&amp;T filed a tariff request with PUCO, the Public Utility Commission of Ohio. Under current Ohio law, let's say we decided we were going to widen a road, or we were going to redo an intersection, we could require utilities such as AT&amp;T to relocate their poles for that street project at their cost, not the city's cost. The only time the city would bear a cost is, say, they had overhead poles, we said we want you to relocate them and bury them. We would pay the difference between moving the pole and burying the pole. But, under current Ohio law, if we're widening a road, we're doing some kind of street project, there's a government function, and we say to a utility, you need to relocate your lines, the cost is on them. AT&amp;T, at the last minute, are trying to sneak this tariff through, that the cost for their relocation of lines has to be paid by the municipality. Hate to say it, it's always AT&amp;T, every problem we've ever had with PUCO, it's always AT&amp;T. They are one of the worst corporate citizens in the state. The Ohio Municipal League immediately jumped on this. They've engaged Taft Law Firm, Chris Miller, who we currently use as our right-of-way expert. He helped draft our right-of-way legislation. He is with Taft, he and Gregory Dunn, I've worked with both these gentlemen, just excellent. They are, they want to challenge this at PUCO. If there's no challenge filed, and it's not filed by the 17th, this tariff automatically becomes effective. So, the Ohio Municipal League is asking all municipalities across Ohio, cities and villages, to do some kind of legislation such as this supporting their challenge to this tariff application. There's no cost to us at this time. If legal action would be needed in the future, if we'd actually need to file something in court, then the Municipal League may come back and ask municipalities to help fund that effort, but right now, there's no cost to us to do. I think all staff up here, the city manager, the finance director, myself, would all strongly encourage council to pass this, to show our support for the Municipal League and their challenge to this tariff request by AT&amp;T.
All right, thank you. So, questions for the law director?
No, and we were at the, Brett and I were at the mayors and managers meeting, which had all the representation from the various municipalities across Green County and Montgomery County, and I think there was a little bit of shock by everybody that this had come in the last minute, right before the holidays, really not giving many people an opportunity, but pretty much most of...
And that was very tactical, too.
Right, tactical on their part, but most municipalities that were there were scrambling to find a way to get a resolution like this out as well to support this, so.
All right, other questions, concerns? All right, so at this time, we will ask for a motion to support this resolution and challenge the application to Public Utilities Commission. Who would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion to support this Resolution 25003, in support of the Municipal League challenge of AT&amp;T.
All right, thank you. Motion by Councilman Crawford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Surrice. And so, what would that, what will this resolution help?
We will, if you pass this tonight, I will ask the city clerk to get me a certified copy tomorrow, and I will get that to Taft tomorrow, so they have it before the 17th.
All right, very good, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
They just want, the municipal league wants these to show PUCO, this is important to the municipalities of Ohio. They support our challenge to this tariff.
Right. So this is kind of like a petition?
Yeah.
Very good. All right. If there's other questions, we'll get a roll call on us, please.
Mayor Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Great. Thanks. Next on our agenda is appointed officials' report. So we are going to do these, and then we're actually going to go into a recess after that, or an executive recess. So at this time, we'll go ahead and do our appointed official reports, and we'll start with our finance director, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, sir. We've wrapped up the 2024 year. Our books are closed. We're still running some reports and working through some of the numbers, but overall, 2024 was a very positive year. Tax revenues were very strong, tax collections in 2024. Though we've, we've talked and discussed with council that we've lost some of the gains that we've had in tax revenue because of the failure of the levy, and so there's still are certainly some challenges there, but, but overall, '24 in a vacuum was a solid year. We also saw strong revenues from water, sewer, sanitation, and storm, some of that specifically storm, you know, related to some of the utility changes that council approved that became effective back in June. So all of those either hit the benchmarks or outperformed what we thought, or where we thought that they would land. Actually have a discussion with the city manager's office tomorrow. A few of us staff members are going to get together and talk through projections and assumptions and some of the numbers from '24. And after that, as we kind of parse through some of that together and make sure we're all on the same page, I'll get my report out to council next, next month, or next week, which will obviously be not only for the month of December, but really a recap of the entire 2024 year. So hopefully, that will give council a pretty good understanding of '24 and the numbers and kind of where we're landed, where we landed and where we're, where we're headed next year, so. But overall, I think 2024 was a really good year. What happened in November kind of put a damper on some of the progress we've been making, but, but it's still a strong year, and we've got some positive things happening and good trends. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke?
At this time.
All right. Thank you.
Just, just one comment, and we'll beat this little tin drum every time we're together. So of our property taxes, we collected, just for everyone's information, roughly 93% go to education, which are the senior community schools and the joint vocational school and county agencies. And about 6.8% of our, your property taxes fund the activities of the city. Is that a fair statement?
Yep. It's, it's actually going to be a little bit less than that.
Now, now that, right.
But generally, that's a, yeah, that's, those are pretty good numbers.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Next is law director. Thank you.
I just have two things I wanted to put on council's radar. We are at the five-year mark for our last charter review. Charter has to be reviewed every five years, so we'll probably come back to you about March or April about appointing that charter review commission. It's possible the commission may not have any recommendations for changes based on the large number of changes we were able to get passed last time, but we do have that process coming up. We do still have several sections of our catified ordinances, our city code, again, to be updated. So if you volunteer for the legislative review committee, you'll probably be seeing me a lot this year. But we, we do need to get our criminal code and our business code read on this year. So those, those projects are in the works.
All right. Thank you. All right. And now-
Danette, what, is there, is there any possibility that we could expedite the charter review and get that on this fall ballot, or is that not even an option?
If they have any changes to recommend, then yes, probably the fall, but we'll, we'll want to get, I mean, the, the last charter changes we made were so huge, there may not be a lot. There were a couple sections, if you remember, that ended up, council kind of tabled, council didn't want to present to the voters. That was Article 11, Article 13. So the charter review commission may want to review those two sections and then come back on those. We did such comprehensive updates on everything else, I, I don't know that there's going to be a lot more. One of the other things, we kind of kicked the can on this, was the issue of council compensation. You, this council is the lowest-paid city council in Green County. You make less than a lot of the village councils. That was something that was discussed at the last charter review, but they decided not to make any change. So again, that's something, and, you know, the charter review commission is mostly made up of citizens. We want them to decide and tell us how do they want to handle that. So there, there's a couple of big things for them to review.
What's our cutoff for, for getting on the November ballot?
August. It's usually, it's early August.
Yeah. And the one thing, remember, the changes that they made as far as levies are only allowed now really to be in November, that does not apply to charter.
Oh, okay. So we could do the-
That does not apply to charter.
Next May.
Tax issues.
Charter amendments are defined, and how that is done is defined by the state constitution. So the rule that the general assembly put on as far as tax levies does not apply. Charter amendments can go on at a primary, they can go a special election in August, they can go in November. So you're not limited to just that November ballot.
Okay.
But understanding that if you do go it alone, you pay the full, the full price of organizing that, as opposed to sharing that cost with other items that we go during the general.
Right.
Yeah. If there's a primary, then we wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us anything. If there's already something on for August, that wouldn't cost us anything.
There would be a primary next year.
Yes.
Right. So we wouldn't be going alone.
Yep. Yep.
All right. Good. Any other questions? Anyone else have questions for Danette?
I just make one comment if I could, that for a lot of the folks who are here and are applicants for the council seats, as we get that charter review commission, we're going to have a number of openings there. And that's a great way to be able to participate as well, too, in terms of actually making the recommendations for any changes. That's basically the constitution of the city. And when those come back from the charter review commission to the council, we, we do not get to make any amendments of the recommendations. We either will approve them to go to ballot or not, but, but the council literally is not the one creating those or amending those. It's created by that commission of folks that are citizens of the city. And so that's a, that's a great way to be able to participate in what goes on in the city.
All right. Thank you. All right. We don't have anything else for Ms. Fisher. We'll move on to Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. I do have a list tonight, so apologies in advance. The first item that I wanted to bring to council are really all the appointed officials. At your direction, we are preparing to bring forth to council street lighting assessment legislation. And so we wanted to have just brief discussion this evening so that you can instruct us basically how you would like to approach, from a methodology standpoint, that, that streetlight assessment. I think two points to start with. First, we are recommending that we take the existing districts and through accompanying legislation, end up consolidating everything. So we'd bring those to a close and then consolidate everything under one district, much easier to manage for us and everybody involved in the process. So that's the first piece. The second one, while you can do a multi-year assessment via the legislative procedures, we're recommending that you just do a one-year. The purpose for that is because our contract with Miami Valley Lighting is about to expire here in the near term. So upon negotiating a new contract, understanding what those new rates are going to be, we could come back then, next year, and do a multi-year contract with updated amounts and so forth. So with that in mind, there are a couple of different methodologies that you can elect to pursue. We think there's an obvious favorite, and I'd like to ask the law director to kind of discuss those with you. And then Ryan's going to give you a little, just kind of background information from a financial perspective in terms of the potential impact. So without further ado, do you want to talk about methodologies?
Sure. There are three methods for doing assessments and determining how those are to be calculated. One is you do it based on the frontage, street frontage, of every lot within the city. That's a lot of work. That's going through and looking at every lot, how wide is it? Not recommended simply from the amount of work that takes. The other option is you go through and decide assessments based on special benefits to each individual lot. Again, that's somewhat arbitrary. How does this one have more benefits than that? So typically, what's recommended for this kind of citywide assessment is a percentage of the tax value. When you are taking the cost of lighting the streets, which under state law is a street improvement, and you're spreading that over all lots, we're talking like, max maybe $30 a year. It's, it's rather small. The less value your property had, the less you pay. So it's based on that kind of percentage. It, it's probably the fairest way to apply it to all properties within the city. So we can do any of the three. I think the recommendation from your three appointed officials would be to do it as a percentage of the tax value of properties, and then, as Brent said, to just do it at this time for one year, until we have that new Miami Valley Lighting contract in place.
Yeah, I think the, just to give some context, the total value that would be generated would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $240,000. When, it actually couldn't play out in a more easy way to understand what it would cost people, because when you look at the, the average valuations or total valuation across the city, it equates to about $1 per month for each $100,000 of value of your home. So that's a pretty simple way to understand it. So if you've got a $100,000 home, it's about $12 a year. On average, when we looked at the most recent numbers that we had-
And that's the assessed, not the appraised value.
That is the assessed value, correct?
Right.
The, yes, it's based on, well, we would, no, it would be based on your total valuation.
Right.
So it would be, when I'm talking about $100,000, it's your total valuation.
An actual $100,000.
Yeah, because we're, the assessed value isn't really any different to 35% of whatever the value is either way, so. So it would be total valuation. So if your total valuation is $100,000, you'd be about $12 per, per year, a dollar a month. And so you can take that math on out. If you've got a $300,000 house, then it's $36 a year. So that's, that's kind of where it lands. Now, when you get into some of the institutional folks out throughout the community, it could be a little more expensive for those entities when you're talking about the county, Kettering Health Network, a Walmart, a Lowe, something like that, where you have higher values, obviously, the assessment's going to be much higher. But for our average resident, the numbers show about $150,000 average value for a single-family dwelling. So that, that equates to a $1.50 a month is essentially what it would, what it would mean based on the current rates that, that we have. And those obviously can change over time, but that hopefully gives council some idea about what type of fee this would, would mean to, to the residents.
So we don't need any formal action this evening. We just basically need some feedback from you in terms of what your preference would be with that methodology. Again, we're recommending you do that, you know, based on that percentage of, of value.
So I have a question for Ryan. So that's based on current assessed values, full value of each property, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. So the value assessed by the, by the county auditor, whatever value that he's assessed to each parcel, at each parcel would be charged a corresponding fee based on that valuation.
And would that be a fix, would that be a fix rate, or is that changed along with the reevaluation that's coming up in another two years?
Yeah, so it would, it would change every year, so we'd do a, a value assessment every year, and then we provide those numbers to the county auditor. So it would be a new calculation each year with the new values.
And if anyone wanted to challenge their current value, that's, there's a process at play for that.
Yes, they can, they can go to the county auditor and, and file a petition to have them reevaluate the value of that property.
Okay.
Yeah, the value is not set by assets, it's set by the county and the state, depending upon the audit years.
Yes.
Understand also that you have multiple neighborhoods, four different districts right now, where you already have the streetlight assessments for those particular additions, so it's not new to some of the, you know, some of the areas of our, of our-
So are we installing new streetlights, or are these current streetlights keeping, being just upcap?
This is lighting the streets. This is the cost of the electric and the lights to light the streets of the city.
What we would consider the maintenance cost.
Which are, which are already areas you're covering?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Plus any new that would be added into the future, you know, as you would expand for new neighborhoods and the additional cost for electricity for those.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
So it's, it's maintenance of the light filaments and, and the cost of the electricity to light those. And we've also included now, this is going to cover all street lighting of all areas, including the downtown area, which we used to maintain ourselves. So it's all going to, to the, to the lighting contractor, and, and this will incorporate those four districts as well now into, into the-
Yeah, and so we will need to do some accompanying legislation to, to essentially, because we, as approved, those were from multiple years, so essentially cancel out might be the term for those existing.
Right. The current four districts that you have, you did assessments on those up through 2027.
Right.
So what we will do is, we will ask you to amend those four assessment ordinances, one for each district, to make the assessments effective through the end of 2024 and then ending. So as of tax year 2025, everybody will be under the citywide streetlight assessment.
And then, again, we're recommending that for a one-year term, because our existing agreement with Miami Valley Lighting, with whom we have all of the maintenance functions provided, is coming to an end here, I think, the end of the year. And so as we would have new rates and understanding of how that cost is, is, is evolving or changing, we would then be able to have a better calculation for that maintenance cost moving forward, come back in line for a future year then, and, and add a multi-year assessment, if that's your will at that time.
I have another question. I'm, I'm an advocate for safety. I just, to the streetlight assessment, to those neighborhoods that are benefiting the most from, such as our commercial owners downtown, is there any thought to, to better compensating the thought of how you charge in, because our downtown area is, those owners of our, our commercial spaces, they're in a different financial position than our, obviously our residential. I don't, has, was that thought, talked about or considered?
Yeah, so that's, that's the methodology that did that discussion in terms of the perceived benefit or value. And I think you-
But you have to go through and make that determination for every lot within the city, if you're going to try and do that.
Establishing some criteria for that.
The thought is, commercial properties usually are valued higher tax-wise, so those commercial properties, under a tax valuation, are automatically going to pay more than a residential property would.
Under the structure by which we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, get it. I get it. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, just looking for some feedback in terms of methodology, so we know how to structure that legislation, as we would bring it back.
Are you good with the one-year?
Well, I think, I think, I, I would say the one-year and using it on the assessed value would be the most equitable, and it, and it also allows us to collect from industrial, commercial, and professional, right, areas. The, the current assessment areas are strictly residential, and that means the residential folks are bearing the full burden of that, as we're rolling that out with the new subdivisions. But what this allows us to do is also collect from the commercial and, and industrial areas and the professional areas as well, too.
But they're, just real fast. So will the, will the commercial industries pay more then? Because if it's spreading across everybody.
Only as it relates to their assessed value.
Yes.
All right.
You know, you're, essentially, your rate's the same, it's just based on your, your assessed value.
So, yeah, so if you had a mansion downtown, you're going to pay more if you were, if you were residential.
Yeah.
So if that's what you're saying, am I saying that correctly?
Correct.
So it's the value of the property owned.
Right. So again, Ryan used the example of Walmart, it's a large commercial property, which is going to have a large valuation, so they're going to pay more, again, proportionally the same amount, right? Based on the rate, but they're going to pay more just by virtue of the, of the increased value. And again, I think it was Mayor Ursula who made the point that, you know, you're, the existing districts that we have are all residential areas, so they're, they're paying that. Currently, your commercial, industrial, institutional are paying nothing toward that service.
Certainly. What would be the cost difference between option one and option three for individual
Essentially, what would be the cost difference between option one and option three for individual homes?
Well, so when you look at how the costs are being broken out in our current subdivisions, it's usually in the, you know, $25 to $30 range, when you're just basing it on parcels. So what we do now is we look at, okay, for this neighborhood, the estimated cost is X, and then we spread it evenly across the number of lots in that subdivision. And it ends up being in the $25 to, you know, $30-some range. So if you're in one of those newer subdivisions, it's probably not going to change very much, because your house is probably worth, you know, $300,000 range, $400,000 range, depending on, you know, which neighborhood we're talking about. But, so it's going to probably be pretty close to what they're already paying today. Some of the neighborhoods, like Elaine Wood, is probably going to pay a much lesser fee based on their valuation than what some of the neighborhoods are paying today.
And again, if you do that, that frontage methodology, there are some accompanying policy decisions. For example, if you have a corner lot, are you going to assess for that entire frontager? So again, you know, we're recommending the assessed valuation methodologies, because it's the simplest, it's, you know, objectively probably the fairest. But it's a lot easier for everyone involved as well.
That's it, you can have a, you know, 100-foot lot with $100,000 home and 100-foot lot with $400,000 home. And if you did it based on the frontage, both of those are going to pay the same. Even though this house is worth $400,000 and this house is only worth $100. So if you do it by tax value, it's at least more, I think, in my opinion, fairer for the value of the home.
Is that what other municipalities tend to do as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And realize, too, this isn't just the lighting, you know, on your street. This pays for the lighting on 35 and Main Street and the parks. And, I mean, basically, all of the publicly-owned lighting in the city.
Yes.
Right. So we all get a benefit from that as we're driving across our community.
Yeah, from a traffic perspective, from a home security and a business security perspective, and yeah. So I think I'm hearing generally consensus that the assessed value methodology. Okay, that's, we'll bring that back at your next meeting, we'll bring that back for consideration. I do have a number of other items, if you're ready to move on. Okay. Next, I want to take, without any other, any further delay, an opportunity just, again, we talked about it a little bit earlier, but I want to thank our public service maintenance staff. They've had a rough week. We had crews that came in Sunday afternoon, just before snowfall started. And we had crews running around the clock for about two and a half straight days. In the midst of that, they had two water main breaks, and we've had, I think, three others since then, including one about 20 minutes ago. So we've had those issues to deal with. Every time we get a major snow event, which doesn't happen terribly often, but we always get some of those negative narys that, why isn't this done? And I just want to reiterate for folks in the community, we always start with our affairs. We have to be able to get emergency vehicles to the, you know, various areas of town. We try to keep commercial routes open so that commerce can continue during these events. Supplies to businesses and hospitals and things can be done. It's regrettable that we don't have more staff to be able to get into residential areas right away. We simply do not have the staff or the trucks to do that. We split the city up into four quadrants. We can mandate our staff to go on 12-hour shifts. We focus on those main thoroughfares and keeping those roadways open. And when we have those under control, then we're able to get into, you know, your arterial streets and neighborhoods, all the way down to, you know, your typical residential streets and then to alleys. That takes time, it just takes time. We're able to have about 10 people on per 12-hour shift, because we have to have a mechanic available to do repairs, we have to have an equipment operator available to load salt and do the things. We simply don't have any more people than to run two of those shifts. And we don't have the trucks that it would take to go out. And we try to keep that cost as reasonable for our taxpayers as possible. But there is a sacrifice to that, and that means that sometimes you've got to wait a little bit. So I want to push back a little bit on the folks complaining, because our crews did a spectacular job. It was treacherous conditions, they were out there the whole time, hour after hour. They've had a long week this week. They deserve a pat on the back and a thank you and not a criticism. No service is ever perfect, and we have a lot of new people who are learning these routes. And I just want to say a big thank you to them, they did a spectacular job, so.
And Brent, not only that, they did it without, a lot of folks have their cars on the street.
Parked on the road.
And especially in the residential area, it's really difficult to get those trucks through there when you have cars parked on both sides of the street without damaging anyone.
Correct.
And I haven't really heard of any reports of, you know, damage to vehicles or those types of things, too. That just slows the whole thing down when that.
Sure does, yeah, sure does, no, I appreciate it.
Brent, I want to add something. All of you know I live in a suppressed economic area of Zena. And for the east side of Zena, you guys did a phenomenal job. I was expecting worse treatment, but you guys are fair, and I want to commend your group.
Appreciate that, and we actually authorized some additional salt, some additional time in the neighborhoods today. We know there are some neighborhoods that, by the time we're able to get to them, folks had, you know, sort of compacted that snow, and that creates what we call an ice pack. We knew we were going to get some sunshine today, that salt works really well in the sun. So we had crews out spreading additional salt, trying to get at that ice pack. So hopefully, some of those neighborhoods that we're, you know, the streets that we're a little slower to get to, that we saw some positive impact today. That's important, because we are forecast to get another three to four inches, perhaps even a little more, tomorrow evening into Saturday. There's nowhere to put that snow, it's not melting anytime soon. So again, our crews will be out effective tomorrow. We have a meeting in the morning to discuss what our game plan will be for this event. So again, thank the crews and just ask for folks to be patient. We're trying to get those main routes open first, and we'll get to your neighborhoods as soon as we can. Additionally, tonight, I want to touch on just a couple of topics that came up at our mayors and managers meeting last night, because I think it's impactful, and I want to keep council abreast of some of these issues. We do keep, through our mayors and managers and our relationship with the Ohio Municipal League, close tabs on legislative items that might be impacting local jurisdictions. It was reported to us tonight that there are early indications that two very concerning pieces of legislation will reemerge in this particular General Assembly. First is another frontal assault on local income taxes. I'm not sure what the General Assembly is not getting about the fact that local governments provide public safety services and transportation services and economic development services. For many of us, like here in Zena, we have almost no property tax value, it's all income tax for the most part. It's our bread and butter, and it's what we need to provide those core services. But it appears that the legislature will again be taking a swipe at this home rule issue of being able to levy these income taxes at the local level. We're told that it's likely they will seek, again, to try to consolidate at the state level a requirement of taxes being collected through the state. There's some suggestion that they may default to the regional tax collection agencies, of which, of course, we participate with RITA, so we're already doing that. But there are other things, for example, it was stated that currently you have to be working in a particular jurisdiction that is income taxed for 20 consecutive days in order to be eligible for any tax. Some suggestion, there'll be another effort to try to increase that to 30 or perhaps 45 days. So those were just some of the highlights, among other things, that we think it's possible, they'll try to attack with this issue. So obviously, for us, this is a very important topic, and we'll continue to monitor this very closely. Another concerning piece, the, earlier, or I should say, back in 2024, there was an attempt, particularly toward the end of the year, to try to force legislation through that would require municipalities to have an increase in their contributions to the Ohio Police and Fire Fund. While we think that's a very worthwhile benefit that we provide to our police officers and firefighters by having a stable, secure retirement income, it's a very costly service. And our concern is that there's not any third-party actuarial been done with that fund to determine the real need. We're not saying that there isn't a need, but what's been suggested would have been extremely costly. That legislation did not make it through the Ohio Senate, so it died last year, but we're told that's likely to come back, very likely to come back early this year. So I think we will be, among other cities, again, mounting some resistance to that, because it's, again, it's an unfunded mandate at a point where we're trying our best to be able to afford to put police officers and firefighters on the streets. This would really inhibit our ability to look at any additions of the future, because it's just additional cost coming to us. So again, appreciate the folks with mayors and managers keeping us abreast of those things, and we'll report to you as we hear more. Also, last night, we did have a presentation from folks at Centerpoint Energy. Of course, that is your gas, natural gas distribution company locally. They were lobbying us pretty hard, because they have submitted for a rate increase with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. They also reported that, just after they submitted and started that process at the end of last year, AES also has submitted for an increase. The numbers given to us last night, it's expected that your typical household, if these increases were to be approved by the Public Utilities Commission, would result in about a $23 and $21 per household per month increase, which is significant for families. I mean, you're talking about 50 bucks a month for families for gas and electric. I think it's unlikely these will be approved in the amounts they've requested, but, you know, people need to understand that that's it. And I think we all understand their costs are increasing with inflation and such as well, but that, those would be steep increases, particularly if they were paired together. So again, we'll continue to monitor that.
But they're still sponsoring the date nearest.
Yeah, so the world is great, so, yeah. A couple of other items, just to bring council up to date. We are working to finalize the annual appropriations ordinance we're currently operating under the temporary. Typically, we like to bring that legislation back to council at your second meeting in January. However, for a number of reasons, we're thinking right now that that's probably going to be the first meeting in February, in part because we know that you need to appoint two additional members, and we want to have some time on important decisions like that to be able to bring those new council members up to date. But we are suggesting and have requested that the previous budget and finance committee, that we go ahead and meet with that group, since they're all returning to council this year next week, so that we can do some additional review with that group in anticipation of the legislation coming back at a later date. It's just timing-wise, it would work well for us to be able to get some input on a few things. So we're requesting that for next week, and then we would bring the, again, the final appropriations ordinance back at your first meeting in February. Also note that we'll be looking to get a property management committee pretty early in the year here. So I know you're beginning to think about your committee assignments, board and commission assignments. But just to let you know that we do have a couple of these committees that, you know, we'll need to meet in the near future. We also will need to be in contact. I know we've had a couple of conversations with some of the council leadership about planning a, some type of retreat day. So we'll want to be in communication, working with the city clerk here in the near future, so we can begin to get some dates set. Again, wanting to wait till you get those council member positions, those vacancies filled, so we can get that scheduled, probably for sometime in February is what we're looking at. And then finally, we just want to remind folks that before our next council meeting is a day of recognition for Martin Luther King Jr. So city offices will be closed in honor of that on Monday, January 20. And so just, folks should just plan to adjust their business with the city for that day. So with that, I will be quiet unless you have any other questions for me.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for city manager? Other than, thank you for the snow removal, that's your ability. I was watching Channel 7, I think it was Monday evening or Tuesday morning, and they were showing the drive-through Zena, and it looked like it barely snowed through our downtown. So thanks for the job that you guys do.
Our pleasure, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. So next on our agenda is council comments and reports. We're actually going to wait to do those and actually switch, we're going to go to executive session. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this is, are we discussing more than personnel?
Personnel.
Okay, so this will be an executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding an appointment. And this will be basically under the guise of Ohio ORC 121.22. So at this time, I will accept a motion to move into executive to discuss personnel.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay, by Councilwoman Serise Anna Second.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. All right. We'll go ahead and.
Who's seconded, I'm sorry?
Mayor. Yeah. So we'll go ahead and get a roll call on that.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Council Crawford?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Aye. So I don't know how long we are going to be in executive session. Could be brief, could be 15, 20 minutes, maybe a little longer.
We're going to talk about that.
Okay.
Committee appointments, too.
Okay, so, so actually, we may or may not come back and conduct business. If we do not do an appointment tonight, we would do that probably at our next meeting. And that could possibly be a special meeting, is what we're looking at. So, but you're welcome to stick around, we appreciate it if you want to. Otherwise, if you could just give us a few minutes, we'll come back.
Before we go to the executive session. I will obviously repeat myself during discussions of the appointment of the new council member, but for the committee assignments, I will be in that executive session.
Correct.
All right, we'll go ahead.
What are we doing first?
Personnel first.
First down first?
Yeah.